I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Lisa. Okay, I call this meeting to order. Rockledge City Council, regular meeting Wednesday, July 17, 2019, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the room?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester is absent. Councilman Dasky.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell is absent and excused. City Attorney McNichol.
Here.
And City Manager Fetra.
Here.
Okay, invocation, please stand for invocation tonight, and it will be by Councilman Dasky. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Before I say the prayer tonight, I'd just like to take a second and say a word about a great person that we lost this past week, not only in the city, but he was a neighbor of mine, a friend of mine. He was also our chairman on the Planning Commission, and this past year, he was the recipient of the Volunteer of the Year Award. Paul Grossman, really, I've never seen anyone excited as he was to win that award, and it makes me feel good now that he actually won that award, was able to enjoy that award, and that he's now in a better place. But I'd like to take a second, just for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer tonight with heavy hearts. We ask that you be with the family of Paul Grossman and help them through this difficult time. We know he's in a better place, and he's beside you and no longer in pain. Again, we thank you that you allowed him to be part of our community, be part of our friendships, and help the city as much as he did while he was here. We ask you to look over this meeting tonight, help us make the best decisions for the residents of Rockledge. We ask you, as always, to watch over our military men and women, and we also ask you to watch over our first responders as they tend to us at our worst times. In your name we pray, amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Thank you Pastor Dasky. John, watch out for him now.
New career on the horizon, huh?
He's learned a lot from you.
I've stepped out my side, that's why my comfort, that one.
All right, the board has before them the minutes of the meeting, June 19, 2019. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 19, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? See none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Presentation, somebody come down.
Tonight, our presentation is going to be for Rockledge Gardens?
You guys come on up.
This is a certificate of commendation presented to Rockledge Gardens at 2153 Rockledge Boulevard, selected by the Rockledge Business Development Committee as the business of the quarter, second quarter 2019. Congratulations, guys.
I just wanted to say thank you all. We are very excited to have been in this community for the last 60 years, and we are very much looking forward to the next 60 years being part of the Rockledge community. So thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it very much. All right, we've got a lot on our agenda tonight. We're going to try to move through this. Financial Budget Report, month of June 2019.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be on receipt of the financial budget report for the month of June 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Public carrying ordinance, first reading, 19-02, rezoning property on Barton Boulevard from C2 and M1 to RMU. Who's going to give me this one?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer an ordinance, ZDA 19-02, rezoning property on Barton Boulevard from C2 and M1 to RMU.
Second.
Excuse me, and I move for the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
In order to the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, changing the zone and classification from the C2, General Commercial District, and the M1, General Industrial District, to the RMU, Redevelopment Mixed Use District, and the Planning District 5, approximately 22.068 acres, located at 190 Barton Boulevard, in the city of Rockledge, as more particularly described in the body of this ordinance. Amending the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Rockledge to reflect the change of zoning affected by this ordinance. Directing the city manager to forthwith cause the appropriate designation to be made on the face of the official city zoning map, indicating the new zoning classification of the property described in this ordinance. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, what's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize publication and public hearing to be held on August 21, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Reports from boards and committees. Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Move to be on receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Council Finance and Budget Committee, minutes of meeting on June 19, 2019. The Business Development Committee, minutes of the meeting on June 25, 2019. Community Redevelopment Agency, Board of Commissioners, minutes of meeting on June 26, 2019. And Planning Commission, minutes of meeting on July 2, 2019, and to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion, we have seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. First recommendation from the Council Finance and Budget Committee, recommendation salary increase of 3% for non-union city employees, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, and members of the audience, this city has a Finance and Budget Committee, of whom at several occasions spent many hours, so although there are many recommendations that you might hear go a little bit quickly tonight, know that a lot of time and diligence was spent in reviewing those recommendations and so forth. So the first item, Mayor and Council, is regarding the 3% increase. As you all know, we generally look at the CPI. CPI is about 2.9%, and at that time, it was rising, so that was the basis for this recommendation to you.
Any questions, or the City Manager? And as, there's only, I think there's two members here tonight that are not on the Finance Committee Budget Hearing, or Budget Finance Committee Committee, Finance Budget Committee, I've got to get it right here. But anyway, we discussed this all last time at the last meeting in June, and everybody understands what they're doing here?
Yes, sir.
So I'm looking for a motion to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve a salary increase of 3% for non-union city employees effective October 1, 2019, with the understanding that negotiation with the unions will be required.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me say this, this is one happy day, when you as a mayor, the city manager, and the staff can look at the work that our employees have been doing. And yes, it's 3%, but it's the step that I wish we will continue. Everyone who knows me, I've always felt that we do great things, but sometime we forget the economical aspect of employment of our employees. And I'm just so glad that this passed unanimously by your board, and I call for the question because I'm definitely going to vote for it.
Question's been called for, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Recommendation two, authorizing latitude to City Manager to adjust rates of pay for certain positions, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is regarding those difficult to fill positions. As you all know, it is everyone who wants a job is pretty much employed, so there are some difficult to fill positions here at the city that, assuming this gets approved, just gives me some, a little latitude to make sure that we have our critical positions filled. Thank you.
Any questions, or the City Manager? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Move to authorize the latitude for the City Manager to adjust rates of pay beginning October 1, 2019, for certain positions deemed to be critical or difficult to fill.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendation number three, authorizing the City Manager to adjust the hourly base rate to an amount of $13.50 per hour, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, as you all recall, with our comp study done several years ago, the city was attempting to elevate its base rate of pay. Currently, it sits at $12 an hour. So if this gets approved, this will be a wonderful step to continue to keep us able to employ people, and frankly, this is still low, but we're very, very appreciative should this be passed. Thank you.
Any questions, or the City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the City Managers to adjust the hourly base rate to an amount of $13.50 per hour, beginning October 1, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Next recommendation, authorize the City Manager to account for any salary compression issues that may arise as a result of the increase of the hourly base rate. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item will allow our assistant City Manager and I, we run regression analyses, to make sure that as the 1350 is put in play, that those have been here, who have been here for, say, one, two, three, four years, it causes compression issues. Well, this will allow us to evaluate that statistically and recognize those for those one, two, three, four number of years of service, so that they get an increase that is equitable as well.
Any questions, or the City Manager? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to authorize the City Manager to account for any salary compensation issues that may arise as a result of increase in the hourly base rate, beginning October 1, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Five, recommendation approval of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 proposed budget as presented at the June 19, 2019 Council Finance Budget Committee Meeting. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you all know, we had a lot of discussion, and the, let me just share with you the several assumptions by which the budget has been built. So one is on a millage rate of 6.10. So that's one assumption. The other is an assumption of a 10% increase in our health care costs. That still has not been finalized, but that is the assumption that we budgeted enough in the event that we have that much of an increase. Also, it was budgeted on the increase of 3%, generally across the board, in the few items that y'all have just approved. So those are the assumptions, and again, we have, assuming it passes, at this time, we have budgets that are all balanced based on the extensive work that the Finance and Budget Committee has already done.
Do you have any questions, or the City Manager? For those of you in the audience, realize we did reduce the millage rate this year from 6.15 to 6.10.
Yes, Mayor.
So the residents of Rockledge are getting a decrease in your taxes. Hopefully, if your value isn't going through the roof, that's another issue. All right, who's going to give me a motion on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget, as presented at the June 19, 2019 Council Finance and Budget Committee Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, recommendation, amending the review procedures outlined in paragraph eight of the city's investment policy. Who's going to give me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to amend the review procedures outlined in paragraph eight of the city's investment policy by requiring the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager/Finance Director to provide a quarterly report on city investment activities, rather than requiring a quarterly meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, who's going to give me the resolution then?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a resolution amending the city investment policy statement, and I move to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
He waived the reading.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't listening to you. The guy's sharper than me. All right. Recommendation number seven, approval of the tentative millage rate. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the Mayor previously stated, the budget has been built on the 6.10 that would be down from 6.15, although it officially, technically, is a tax increase of 3% since we didn't go to the rollback rate, but it is a reduction in the millage rate.
Does everybody on this City Council understand that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when you're asked out there by the public, why is it a tax increase, you will know how to answer that, even though we're reducing the tax rate itself. Okay. Does everybody in the audience understand that? Do we need a little quick definition? Well, what it is, is the county uses what they call a rollback rate. They figure what, you can only, your rollback rate is the taxes, the full taxes that you levied the year before. And so they have a rollback rate, and that doesn't count new construction and everything else, values going up and all. So they give you a rollback rate, which, I don't know what a rollback rate was this year.
It would be 5.9223.
So last year, you paid a 6.15 tax rate on your property values. If you were to roll back this year, it'd be 5.92, is what you said?
Yes, Mayor, 5.9223.
And that'd be the same amount of taxes we collected last year to this year. And that takes into account for the property values and new construction and everything else. So we reduced the rate from 6.15 to 6.10. They still consider it, technically, it's a 3% tax increase, even though you're paying less of a tax rate now. That's the way it is. Did I say something wrong?
No, no.
It always gets this way this time of the year. Okay, so no other discussion, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve a tentative millage rate of 6.10 mills, and to report said rate to the Brevard County Property Appraiser and the state of Florida.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. No other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Resolution?
It has to be read in its entirety. The City Manager and I just confabbed, and the numbers that was given by our financial director was 5.905, not 22.
Sorry about that.
Okay, is that right, Matthew?
Yeah, got updated, I apologize.
Don't, I didn't want you to start hearing different numbers.
Yeah, no, I apologize.
Okay. As I said, this is in its entirety.
You've...
Oh, hasn't been offered?
No.
I'll get out of the room before you do.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a resolution entitled, advising the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the rollback millage rate for the taxable year 2019, and move to read the resolution in its entirety.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney, now it's your turn.
A resolution of the Rockledge City Council advising the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the rollback millage rate of the city of Rockledge for the taxable year 2019, the proposed millage rate of said city for the taxable year 2019, and the time and place of the first public hearing on proposed 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget for said city. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida as follows. Section 1, the city of Rockledge has hereby advised the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the following. A, based upon information certified to the city of Rockledge by the Brevard County Property Appraiser, the rollback millage rate of the city of Rockledge for the taxable year 2019 is $5.905 cents, dollars, excuse me, per $1,000 of assessed valuation. B, the proposed millage rate of the city of Rockledge for the taxable year 2019 is $6.10 dollars per $1,000 of assessed valuation. C, the first public hearing to consider the tentative budget for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year of the city of Rockledge, and to consider the aforementioned proposed millage rate will be held on Wednesday, September 4, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city chambers in the Rockledge City Hall, 1600 Huntington Lane, Rockledge, Florida. Section 2, that the Finance Director of the city of Rockledge is hereby instructed to furnish a certified copy of this resolution to the Brevard County Property Appraiser within 35 days of said property appraisal certification of the 2019 taxable value of the properties within the jurisdiction of the city of Rockledge, passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Rockledge, Florida, this blank day of 2019.
What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendation, recommendation number eight, increase of 5% per year for each of the next three years on the water usage charge per 1,000 gallons. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, there's an extensive deferred maintenance list and some other items with regard to our wastewater plant, and so this increase will help towards all of those efforts with capital and operations, and 5%, frankly, is just slightly over CPI to help keep up with the expenses as the items continue to increase in cost. And just so they know, even if this gets approved tonight, after the third year out, we will still be the cheapest in the county with the current rates this year, and that's with none of the other entities increasing, which one could assume they would likely increase. So we will still be the cheapest three years from now with the rates right now.
In Brevard County.
In Brevard County, yes, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions, City Manager? Everybody understands what we're doing?
Yes.
I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve an increase of 5% per year for each of the next three years on the water usage charge per 1,000 gallons, effective October 1, 2019, and every October 1 thereafter, up to and including October 1, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have a discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendation number nine, increase in certain rates of sanitation services for residential properties and commercial multifamily units. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Finance and Budget Committee knows, these rates have not been looked at for over 20 years, so it was kind of interesting that they were not, and the sanitation fund is very, very fragile. As you all know, we're one of two cities in the county that has its own sanitation services, which I know the citizens all love and enjoy, because we love our sanitation and how efficient they operate. But in doing a pro forma and a cash flow statement in the out years, that fund literally will not make it if, frankly, we don't do something. It is not able to pay for itself, and that's not even paying for another packer or one of the trucks each year. We have a very old fleet, so for a multitude of reasons, this really needs to be done for the sake of that fund and that business, if you will.
For the members that, on the council here that are not on the Finance Committee, how many packers do we have, garbage trucks?
We have 18, Mayor, and I can get you that document and sanitation fleet of vehicles. So we have, pardon me, we have 20 packers, several claw trucks, over seven of those have over 100,000 miles on them, at least one has over 200,000 miles on it. The three claw trucks that the city owns, two of them have over 200,000 miles on them. So you can hear the fragility of these packers, these trucks, this fund. Again, we've done careful analysis on it, and we don't take this recommendation lightly. We don't like to raise rates, but we truly believe this is essential for the stability of the fund and to continue to provide good sanitation services to the community.
Any questions, or the City Manager? I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve increases in the rates for the sanitation services for residential properties and commercial multifamily units, effective October 1, 2019. As follows, the residential sanitation, an increase of a dollar from $1,240 to $1,340 for residential sanitation, refuse collection for each of the next three years through 2022, recycling, an increase of $1.25 from $2.50 to $3.75 for fiscal year 2020, and then increases of 50 cents in fiscal year 2021 and 2022 from $3.75 to $4.25, and from $4.25 to $4.75 respectfully for residential recycling collection, current $2.50 fiscal year 2020, $3.75. That's, actually, that's what I just read. And commercial multifamily recycling, an increase of $1.40 from $2.35 to $3.75 for fiscal year 2020, and then increases of 50 cents in fiscal years 2020 and 2022 from $3.75 to $4.25, and from $4.25 to $4.75 respectfully for commercial recycling collection. Dumpsters, an increase of $1 from $4.75 to $5.75 for fiscal year 2020, and then increases of 50 cents in fiscal year 2020 and 2022 from $5.75 to $6.25, and from $6.25 to $6.75 respectfully for commercial dumpsters. Cans, an increase of $5 from $30 to $35 for fiscal year 2020, and then increases of $5 in fiscal year 2021 and 2022 from $35 to $40, and from $40 to $45 respectfully for commercial cans. cans.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. One more recommendation, I think?
Yes, Mayor.
Increase in certain rates of sanitation services, no, no, implementing, I'm sorry, implementing new impact fees for sanitation services. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So currently, this city does not have an impact fee for the sanitation fund, so if there's any new development, in essence, they're not paying, if you will, for that new development, so we believe it prudent, again, for this fund, that as new development comes in, they pay for the impact on that business, i.e. the sanitation fund, so we are recommending council's consideration on this recommendation.
Anybody have any questions of the City Manager?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to impose new impact fees for sanitation services, which will take effective on October 1st, 2019, as follows. For residential construction, $300 per single-family home. For multifamily construction, $100 per apartment unit. For commercial construction, 50 cents per square feet.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion? For those of you in the audience, what that means, we've never had impact fees for our sanitation department in our 132 years in existence. As of October 1st, we're going to now start having impact fees for our sanitation department. So when a new house comes into the city, they're going to have to pay us a $300 fee as an impact for the house, and then for commercial, they're going to have to pay us 50 cents per square foot for the commercial impact of a dumpster. This is something we felt as the Finance Committee that we had to do, because we got into a position this year where our fund is very low with our sanitation and it's not paying for itself anymore. We can't, don't have enough money to buy a new packer, and that's pretty bad when you got packers out there that are 200,000 miles on them. So that's why we're doing what we're doing. This is the first time the City of Rockledge has ever had impact fees for any division in our city, and other than the sewer, which has always been an impact fee for sewers, but hopefully this will work out. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right. Business Development Committee meeting, no recommendation. Community redevelopment meeting, we have a recommendation. Acceptance of appraisal of property on Angela Avenue, authorization for the city manager to negotiate the sale of said property. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The CRA, the Commission Board, has approved the city manager to negotiate the sale of this property. It's 802 Angela Avenue, and the appraisal came in at $47,000, and if council authorizes me to go forward, I will negotiate with the assistance of the city attorney for the sale of that property.
Any questions, City Manager? Looking for a motion to move forward?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Recommendation, approval, preliminary fiscal year 2019-20, community redevelopment agency budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the CRA, the Commission Board, has to approve their CRA budget, which they have done and recommend approval to the city council.
Any questions on the CRA budget? Everybody's had a chance to look it over and study it and approve it in the past. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Planning Commission recommendation, approve proposed changes to Chapter 3 of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations, LDR, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Mrs. Bernard making her way up here in case you have more detailed questions, but in essence, these were some recommended changes on Chapter 3, which were more administrative procedural-type changes.
Alex, did you want to talk?
Alex, if you want to say anything else. Good evening. In Chapter 3 of our land development regulations, we have some regulations in regards to annexation that's on the books, and so basically what this does is it improves upon what's currently there in regards to annexation, so it adds a paragraph in, and that's what was presented before Planning Commission and recommended to you all.
It's all about future annexations. Anybody have any questions of Alex, of City Manager? We've discussed this in detail before, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the recommendation and to authorize staff to draft the requisite ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Recommendation, evaluation and appraisal report. Where am I at? Oh, right up here. That's why I'm supposed to put X's on them. Okay, recommendation, evaluation appraisal report and public hearing, who's going to give me this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Public hearing resolution adopting the evaluation appraisal? I'm sorry. Yeah. At this time, I open this up for a public hearing, is anybody, is there anybody that would like to speak on this evaluation and appraisal report? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this particular item on our agenda? Seeing none, close the public hearing. With the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Offer a resolution adopting the evaluation and appraisal report and changes to the Rockledge Comprehensive Plan, and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, Mr. City Attorney.
Resolution for the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the evaluation appraisal report for the City of Rockledge Comprehensive Plan, stating the intent of the council to amend the comprehensive plan based upon recommendations and any of the report, and moving transmission of the report to the City of Rockledge in accordance with Section 6, excuse me, 630, 319.
With pleasure, the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Reappointments and appointments, reappointments, there are none. Appointments, Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, currently there is one vacancies for the Citizen Board, one application has been received from Devon La, how do you pronounce that?
Lamaro.
Lamaro? Is Devon Lamaro in the audience?
If so, come and tell us how to pronounce your name.
If so, come and tell us how to pronounce your name.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to appoint Devon Lamaro by acclamation to the Citizens Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Unfinished business, there's none tonight, consent business, Mr. Dasky.
Yes, sir. Move for the approval of these consent business items. A, is purchase of two public safety vehicles for the Fire Division of the Public Safety Department. B, is bulk oil purchasing agreement for the Public Works Department. C, cooperative equipment loan agreement for the Public Safety Department. D, proposed settlement agreement Gomez versus City of Rockledge for the city manager. E, proposed settlement agreement Woods versus City of Rockledge for the city manager. F, proposed settlement agreement McGurkin versus City of Rockledge for the city manager. G, detailed design and associated engineering services, Pluckybaum Road, Force Main Phase 2 for the Wastewater Treatment Department. H, renewal of the line of credit for Community Bank of the South for the city manager/assistant city manager and finance director. I, approval of roof replacement wastewater treatment department administrative building for the wastewater treatment department. J, proposed rental fee schedule, Rockledge Civic Hub for the city manager. And K, approval for the inter-local agreement, City of Cocoa and City of Rockledge Crossing Guard Services for 2019-2020 school year for the Public Safety Department.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, this is consent business, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. New business action item, recommendation, Nationwide Retirement Solutions, City Manager, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, Nationwide has approached the city with these three options. Frankly, we believe that they're trying to help this fund to be, I'll say, recession-proof as we see what's going on with rates and the potential for going on with rates through the end of this calendar year. So it used to be, I believe, a guaranteed 3%, but now it's coming down gradually, but we are recommending to you all option 1, as the memo states, but if you have detailed questions, the assistant city manager would be happy to try and answer them.
Yes, sir. Matthew Tryne, Finance Director, City of Rockledge, 1600 Huntington Lane.
Anybody have any questions, so Matthew? Everybody understands what's going on here?
Yes, sir.
Times have changed, no doubt. Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I move to approve the staff's recommendation and select option number 1.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I'm sorry, Matthew, I thought you needed to speak, but go ahead.
Don't worry, sir.
You're good, thank you. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications, at this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to your city council about, I see one coming forward, about anything to do at the City of Rockledge? It's your turn to come forward. We have one speaker at this time. Name and address for the record.
Pat O'Neil, 1232 Primrose Place, the City of Rockledge. Three brief things. Dwayne, that was great what you said about Paul, I had the honor to work with him, about 12 years on the Planning Commission, a number of those years with him as the chair. He was truly a public servant, and he did one heck of a job. He came prepared every time, and he loved this city, and he loved the Planning Commission. Secondly, Mayor, Council, city manager, and staff, I commend you on the handling of the city employee salary issue. We have the best city employees of anybody I've ever met. I love my sanitation department, Mr. Poole. I know most of mine on the first-name basis. They just do a great job, and what we can do to retain them is huge, so I commend you for that. Third, I'd like to make an introduction, if I might. Kirk, I can't pronounce you, Drycer? He is the new pastor at Rockledge United Methodist Church. I met him last night at the scout meeting for the very first time, and I saw him walk in, I'm going two times in one week, this is amazing, but anyhow, this is your new pastor from the church basically across the street. Pastor Ferguson?
Yes, sir.
Pastor Drycer.
Nice to meet you.
Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the introduction. Hopefully, we'll be seeing more of you, sir. Anybody else want to speak to city council about anything to do with the City of Rockledge? Okay, let's move on. Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just a few quick items. One that I would ask for your thoughts on or direction, tonight, under consent business, you had three items, three settlement items, so there is a, in researching these items with the city attorney, there is a resolution that was done in 2012 whereby the city manager at that time had up to $15,000 to settle, but the final approval came to the city council. So just something to ponder, might the council consider authorizing the city manager to, one, up to her spending authority, which for the public is $25,000, but to perhaps have a final say in those within her spending authority? It would be with close consultation with the city attorney, but these things sometimes, sometimes they have nondisclosure or confidentiality, you know, agreements as part of mediation or the settlement. Sometimes it's, we don't want to give perhaps other employees thoughts and ideas on, hey, let's try to sue, or different things, sometimes it's best to keep them, not trying to hide anything, but sometimes it's best to keep them confidential. So just tossing out that, or planting that seed, if council might consider authorizing the city attorney to bring forth a resolution, perhaps amending that 2012 resolution, that might be in the best interest of the city.
City Manager, I always truly thought you had that authorization, since you were going to be with the city attorney the whole time, I thought both of y'all had authorization to settle for us under a certain amount of money. I had no idea, it always had to be brought back here. I understand it being brought back here so we can be informed, but I thought you had authorization already, but how's anybody else in the city council think?
Yeah, I just have a question, what was the 2012?
It was, at that time, $15,000 was the CM's spending authority at that time.
For those of you in the audience, this is, when you're a city or a county or a state, you're always getting sued. We always have piles of lawsuits that are, the city attorney's gone, actually, we don't. From the time I started as mayor, seven years ago, eight years ago, we had three pages of lawsuits, now we only got three lawsuits going on right now. That's pretty amazing, actually.
And one of them is an old friend. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the way the agreement was set up, or the resolution was set up before, we, the city manager and the city attorney had the authority to negotiate up to that amount, but still had to come to the council for final approval. There are included in federal suits, almost invariably, nondisclosure agreements, there are a lot of other reasons that you may not want to bring input on as a part of the public record, personal matters, an injury case, something of that nature, and if we bring it before the council, it becomes public record automatically, and that's really the concern, that, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, it's just that if it involves, say, a minor, and it may come up and embarrass them when they're adults with our lovely internet and web and everything being of record on it, we just need to give the city manager the opportunity to resolve it. I'm quite sure that she will, you know, let you know that it's been settled, and obviously keep you up to speed because you need to know where the money's going if it's coming from us, so that's really what I would say, it really is nothing different, nothing onerous, it's just, you know, before the agreement could be, you know, completed, it had to be approved by the council, now we'd be able to complete the agreements up to spending authority, and after, anything else, we'd have to come.
So we're looking for a motion to draft a resolution to bring back to the council to address these issues.
I just wanted to ensure that there's nothing, nothing hidden here, you know, it's just...
Does everybody on the council understand, has anybody got a problem with it?
No.
I'm looking for a motion to give the city attorney authorization to draft this resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
And to amend the, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
Like to make a motion that we authorize the city attorney to amend the 2012 resolution to give the city attorney to, up to 25,000 or her spending authority, final say within any issues going forward.
No, it's the...
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
City Attorney.
Oh, city manager, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, I will amend that.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. I'll give you in the audience an example of a lawsuit. When somebody runs into a curb with their car, just runs into a curb, and they bust their tire, they CS. It happens, we get those lawsuits all the time, because it's our curb. All right, anything else?
Just two quick things, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things, Mr. Mayor. So just a friendly reminder to council that our next meeting, if you will, will actually be the full council budget workshop on Wednesday, July 31st. And our next full council meeting will actually be August 21st. So still keeping with the two meetings, one happens to be July 31st. Last year, that Wednesday fell on August 1st. So just to make sure we're clear. And then lastly, as you all probably know, legislative session next year will start in January. Yay, early, just kidding. But that means that the Brevard delegation meeting will happen earlier in the fall. So we just recently got the date of said meeting. So the Brevard delegation meeting will happen Wednesday, September 25th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it will be held at the Port Authority Commission Room. Interestingly enough, the chairman of the Brevard delegation this year will be Senator Tom Wright out of Volusia County. Thank you, Mayor.
And you have plans on being there speaking for the city?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I've already filled out the form and I'll certainly get my direction from council as to your wishes as to what to say, but I did want to submit the form in time. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, Mayor, thank you.
You're good. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the city attorney's litigation report.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to be in receipt of the city attorney litigation report dated July 1st, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney, you got any updates for us?
Nothing else other than what's on the report. I will give you an update on something I found out about the ADA lawsuit that we were involved in. They keep trying to train me with continuing legal education and I went to one that was on the top of the billing, the lawsuits. Interesting thing, we had written a letter to Congressman Posy asking him to see, you know, look at the regulations and so on and so forth. Found out at this seminar that the Department of Justice had the responsibility and were bringing forward regulations, both for Title II, which was equal access, and Title III, which was equal service. And they withdrew them. And so there are no regulations for the ADA.
So the lawsuit's going to continue to fly?
So it's, actually, we don't know whether any of them are ever going to be litigated because the people who are doing it, the plaintiffs, are keeping the suits to such a minimum amount of money that it's worth more to settle them than it is to litigate them. And that's what's going on now.
For those of you in the audience, we were, we had a suit filed against us last year or a few months?
Few months ago.
Just a few months ago. Somebody out of Miami, they were blind and they couldn't see our website. Under the ADA.
Legally blind.
Legally blind. And they couldn't see our website and they had no way of reading our website online, so they sued us. And they won. Basically, we settled.
Well, actually, the league is our insurer, we have no deductible.
Right.
And they take the defense of the lawsuit and they settled it, you know, and so they're taking care of that. Yeah, they don't go to trial.
No.
And that's the one thing that happens from, and the problem that they need to address is that now that this one defendant is taken care of, you don't know how many more of them are going to come out of the woodwork.
That's right.
And also at the seminar, they gave us some common sense things. One of the biggest problems the readers have are PDF files. I don't know, I am not a computer person, but I guess PDF, it's read as a picture rather than words. And that's the biggest problem that they have with them. So we're probably going to have to comb through our documents to make sure we can get rid of any of the PDFs we can.
And you're on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are certainly methods to ensure compatibility, starting with the source document, the raw file, and then when you convert it to PDF, there are certain steps that you take to ensure that it's compliant.
All right. Anybody have any questions, or the city attorney?
No, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Let's move on. Reports from the diocese, city clerk. Joe, you got anything else? Did you enjoy your steak the other night? Belated happy birthday, by the way.
I don't think it was as good as yours.
Yeah, ours were good.
It was my birthday, 28th of June, and I went out on my first restaurant in Charlotte, State.
Yes.
I took, like, your friend, his wife, my wife, my son, the dinner, and everyone there. They were enjoying themselves. They had...
Oh, yes. No doubt about it. Councilwoman Martin?
You're starting with me?
I'm starting with you?
Oh.
Well, because Martin's not here, I have to start with you.
Okay. I was trying to remember if we met, if we've met since the picnic. I don't think we have.
We haven't.
Yeah, awesome picnic, awesome turnout, hot, hot, hot. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting at the All-Galle Yacht Club. I think Linda Weatherman with EDC was the speaker, if I recall. Also, just a few quick things that I wanted to share. Those of us in the area, we're familiar with Cocoa High Choir or Chorus. They are raising funds to perform at Carnegie Hall and they will be performing on August 10th at 2:00 at the Cocoa Village Playhouse. So anyone that wants to support their efforts, please go online and purchase tickets to this fundraiser. It's August the 10th at 2:00 and I think the tickets are $25. I think that may be it. I did bring a couple of publications from the Brevard Ebony News to share. I did a feature story. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we had Pastor Lurleen Smith who had her final benediction and the mayor presented her with a, an award for her service almost, I think it was over 50 years. So I did a feature story in the Brevard Ebony News. And those of you that are not familiar, this is a free publication throughout Brevard that's distributed throughout Brevard County. And Ben Kane is the editor and he's having a gala, a red carpet awards gala. I am a freelance writer. Most of the writers in this publication are just that, we write free, volunteer. And he is having a red carpet gala on Saturday, October 12th, and it will be at the Space Coast Holiday Inn. And it's at 5:30. And the writers, the photographers are being honored at that awards ceremony and I will be one of the recipients of an award. And anyone that would like to attend, I would certainly appreciate your support and there are some publications in the lobby. And I think that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Joe Lee Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to read my comments. And let me say this, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dr. Fettro, Attorney General Nicola, the executive staff, and all of our employees and committee members and board members and all of the wonderful Rockledge citizens. It has been my pleasure working for all of the wonderful citizens of Rockledge and serving with you and all of our hard-working employees for the betterment of our city. I can truthfully and religiously say that I have enjoyed every, every year and day and minute since I've been on the council. Therefore, I am hereby formally announcing that after serving as a council member for the past 36 years, I will not be running for reelection in the November 2019 election. Although I'm not seeking reelection, please let it be known that I will always be thankful and grateful to have worked with all of you and former elected officials and employees. And my main enjoyment has come, as I like to say, being a community public servant, being a community public servant. Altemeese and I will continue our community involvement, but on a personal note, we will be continuing our travel and I will not get very serious about writing my book. Thank you, it's been my pleasure serving with you.
Thank you, Joe.
You don't with dry eyes. How about that?
I don't even think he's 36 yet, is he? Are you 36, Sean?
36?
Yeah.
No, 37, just turned 37 last year. Thank you for helping me, bringing me back. There's no way that I could share anything without first giving my respect and appreciation to Dr. Smith. I have watched him throughout the years and he's truly been a mentor in my life and I have gleaned and learned so much from him. I actually grew up in the same neighborhood as a little kid and used to dip in his pool every now and then and many times I got whippings later, but that was okay, it was worth it. So to Dr. Smith, thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Wow. July 4th was an amazing day. We had a great day in the city of Rockledge. I had the opportunity to not only be at the picnic, but had the opportunity to serve this year in the refreshment area and we have to give hats off, obviously, Dr. Fettro, to your staff, to yourself, to your staff, and all of you, Ashley, and all of you that made that day possible. It was another amazing day in the city of Rockledge and we appreciate our staff. Can we give our, I'm going to do the, Dr. Joe Lee Smith, can we give everybody a hand? Great job. Also had the opportunity that evening to attend the affair down in the city of Cocoa. It was an amazing opportunity. This was my first year, believe it or not, that I took the time, had the time. Usually my wife and I in the past have always been out of town, but this year I had the opportunity to be at the fireworks. We stayed through the whole night and it was an amazing night. The orchestra did an amazing job, absolutely an amazing time. I want to share this. I've had the honor to represent the city and the council at the Space Coast League of Cities on the Board of Directors. As you heard Dr. Fettro say a moment ago, this year, the session starts in January because 2020, as you know, is an election, major election year. As a result of that, legislative days will be starting earlier in the month of February. Matter of fact, the legislative session, excuse me, starts January 14th, but the legislative action days starts in February. As matter of fact, the specific dates, February 11th and 12th. As a result of that, the committee meetings will be starting earlier this year. I have the dates, we have dates in September, October, November, and December where the committee meetings in Tallahassee will be convening early. The Space Coast League of Cities is doing something different this year. They're wanting to take a delegation to Tallahassee from the advocacy committee. That was, this is the first time there's been dollars that have been budgeted for that, to take some of the advocacy key advocacy committee members that desire to go to Tallahassee during the committee meetings. One thing that was brought up in the Space Coast League of Cities was the making sure that we don't violate sunshine by taking more than one council member. That as well was brought up in our ethics training that we had, what, a few months ago? And they recommended and wanted the cities just again to be aware of not to take or not to travel, two council members should not travel together. And so on that note, I just share that as we're moving forward and making decision within the next probably few months who will be traveling. I just want to kind of bring that out, but at the same time, Space Coast League of Cities have said the same thing that I've offered, to travel with the Space Coast League of Cities. What they have said again, again, if there's any person on this diocese, for example, that wants to go during the committee meetings, they're welcome to, but again, we're concerned about the violation. But of course, it would be something upon the budget of the city and the, obviously, the city council to make that decision if we want anybody to travel with them since they have space. So I just bring these things out just kind of ahead of time, making us aware of things that were discussed at the Space Coast League of Cities. It was a great dinner at the All-Galle Yacht Club in Indian Harbor. It was a great speaker and we had a tremendous time. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Sean, I think as a city council, I think we still want our city manager there representing us as well.
Absolutely.
It's not a problem, right?
Not a problem at all.
It's not a problem.
That's not.
Okay.
As long as there's not two council members traveling.
Right. So you're our representative, so probably it'd be whoever our representative is that will be going.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir. I yield.
Councilman Dasky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll probably hear a couple repetitive things, get near the end of the reports, some of it is bound to be repetitive and I'll try to speed it up. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Smith, for your years of service. When I came on council, everyone was very welcoming, everyone was very good at helping me learn the ropes and your guidance and your mentorship means a lot and always will. I thank you very much. More to be said on that later. The July 4th picnic and the fireworks, can't say enough about the city staff here, what they've done to put that together, the volunteers that helped that make a great event. Also give a special call out to Pat O'Neil who's here tonight. He works with the Kiwanis and cooks most of the burgers. I think if I'm correct, you're up to seven cows that you've cooked now over the years?
Four.
Oh, four cows, I'm sorry. I'm giving you credit for too much, but four cows that he's cooked over the years for us and I can't remember how many hamburgers that equates to, but thank you for doing that every year that you've done that. And again, just a great event. Everyone I talk to that attends that event is always pleased and happy with it, so thank you to the staff. I had the honor of doing the introductions for the picnic as well as the City of Cocoa Firework Display. And the mayor and the deputy mayor were out of town, so I had that honor. I will tell you, I've already apologized to him, but I'll say it again, an apology to Dr. Joe Lee Smith. I'm in the middle of, in the city of Cocoa and going through this and I'm talking about our currently longest-serving member and all of a sudden my mind goes completely blank. And I'm like, I don't remember his name. So I lean over to Councilwoman Martin and I said, I can't remember his name. Of course, I have the microphone down and I don't even recall if she said Joe Lee or Dr. Smith, but that sudden it came back to me and I'm like, oh, okay, Dr. Joe Lee Smith. So I apologize again. Your mind does amazing things at times and other times it does not.
Keep living, you're going to be forgetful.
Finally, I'll wrap up. We had our first meeting for the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony. Most of you that know me know that that's very, very special to me and I truly believe that we need to continue doing that ceremony every year just to remember. We're going to make a little change this year. It is going to be on the actual day, 9/11, it'll be 6:00 p.m., but we're actually going to do it at the Civic Hub. Those of you that have attended in the past, we've had it at the fire station on Morel Road, but the committee, and I agree totally, we felt that with the city hub that we have here... we have here, we need to utilize it, make, make use of it. And this is a great venue to, to kick off with that and, and have that there. So mark your calendars, 6:00 PM, September 11th, at the city hub for the ceremony. I yield, thank you.
Great, thank you. And that will be exciting this year, guys. We're going to have a speaker. That's correct. We're going to have a speaker that lives in Rockledge that was on Air Force One 9/11. He was the communication officer on, on Air Force One. He's going to be speaking about what it was like to be on Air Force One that day. Very interesting. And he's also a Rockledge resident, which is very important to me. Again, I want to thank Councilman Dasky for recognizing Paul Grossman. We lost a great leader for our city. He was on the planning commission for many years and other various boards as well that he was on, but he was a great leader. He was one of our chairman and you always knew when you walked in there who was in charge of that meeting when Paul Grossman was the chair. He did a great job and he was always prepared. Again, congratulate Dr. Smith. Me and you go back a long ways and you're certainly going to be missed, missed. You were certainly a statesman, one of the few statesmen that you can say that are still in politics today. And we're going to reminisce a lot more over the next couple of months until your last day, but we appreciate your service and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
I think that's it. I knew there was something else I was going to talk about, but I can't think of it. So if there's nothing else before this council, I will adjourn at 7:13 PM.